Good evening. I am going to call the select board meeting to order. It is Monday, May 1st, Happy May Day, and it is 6:00 PM. And if we could start by doing a pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation in, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're full tonight. Can I get?
I give you make a motion to approve Treasury Right 23-22 and Federal 23 PW-22.
Second. Any discussion? And a roll call vote?
Galvin I excluding Safe Place.
Nichols I excluding COA wages.
Wait a minute, I'm Ben White Eye.
And approval of minutes, there's two meetings, April 18th and April 24th.
I'll make a motion to approve, even though I wasn't here.
Then we want to have somebody else do it.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, April 18th, 2023, and April 18th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? Roll call?
Calvin I.
Nichols I.
Wait a minute.
Ben White Eye.
I don't see why you put 23, but that's all right. It's either the 18th or the 24th, is what I say for minutes.
Didn't he say?
He only did the 18th, 2023.
Yeah.
Do you not have all of them?
I make a motion to approve meeting minutes on April 24th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? Roll call?
Galvin I.
Nichols I.
Wait a minute.
I'm Ben White Eye. On page two already. Is anyone here for public comment? Yes? Yes. Anybody on Zoom for public comment? So we had a public hearing scheduled for 6:00 PM by Star Auto Sales. Tamika has received confirmation and information saying that the applicant is asking to withdraw the application, and we need to accept the applicant's withdrawal. Do I have a motion to do that?
Removed.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, any questions about this?
I have a question, Tamika, is there anything that we as a town can do to either be more, is it like a town side thing, or is it like a business side thing? I just want to make sure that we're doing what we can to be small business friendly.
Yes, in this particular case, the property owner has decided to go with another business to operate. So yeah, this one was not town related.
Okay, thank you. This was, if I'm sorry, this was the one that we had changed, added the area to Village Center District zoning or whatever, right?
Exactly, yes. And then last week, the planning board received a request from the property owner to possibly amend his special permit, which in order to have the dealer license, he has to have the special permit. So it's still kind of up in the air if he's going to do that or not. So I explained until everything's settled and we have the information from the new business that's going to be there, it's best to just withdraw, and he agreed.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to you in the planning office for working with the applicant and everything.
Got it.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to department head updates. Do we have Dave McCray on the?
Did we take a vote on that?
No, we didn't vote.
Oh, we did?
Nope.
We had a first and a second.
There's a discussion, thank you.
Galvin I.
Nichols I.
Wait a minute.
I'm Ben White Eye.
Dave McCray should be on Zoom.
Mr. McCray, are you on Zoom?
Do you know if the speaker issue's been worked out? Peter, do you know if the speaker issue's been worked out? Because I know last week, we were, um, okay, thank you.
What did he say?
It's on.
Hey, ignore it, it's about time.
The curtain.
Okay.
So David, you're muted if you're on. There's a couple of numbers. Why does it not even show you?
Depends if you call in or if you're on, like, my parents.
Call it, you're on the air. He's trying to, that box that keeps.
Right.
Changing.
Said something for a minute.
Teasing us with names.
Always something that slows us down.
Yeah. I'm wondering if we could just figure out what's going on with Dave and maybe move on to Director Michael Longrady, if that's okay with you. Please, you're so far away.
You can find a seat.
Yeah.
Move out of the way. So I just want to start with our minimum staffing level is going to be back to par, starting May 7th. This will get me off the desk, working the desk regularly. I've been working the desk approximately three, between three to four shifts a week, and trying to manage my administrative roles as well while we had these vacancies within the department. That last employee is just about clear from our training program. That pretty much brings us to two people per shift, 24/7, seven days a week. We do have one more vacancy to fill, but that's not, it wasn't crucial. It wasn't forcing any of my current employees to work overtime. This process was just completed. Our interview board interviewed, I think it was 11 candidates on, I think it was Monday, Monday night. Eleven, last Monday, 11 candidates, and narrowed that down to three, with one of them being the top selection who is currently in town on Pamukseth Road. This process was thorough. We start with initial registry and criminal background checks. From there, we move on to our innovative software that tests dispatchers, job applicants in job-related skills in 24 different sections, from map reading, data entry, answering 911 calls, and so on. From there, it moves on to a personality test, and then lastly, past employment reference checks. So that's all been completed. And the last final part of this is to invite Austin to interview this last candidate and see if they're the best candidate for the Town of Rutland and the Rutland Regional Dispatch Center. So we're currently setting that up, hopefully this week, so we can complete that process and get that person into our training program. Moving on from there, just some little bit of statistics for the department, just for this fiscal year. So far, the center has answered 11,294 business line calls within the department, 4,000 911 wireless calls, 282 911 landline, which is your regular house lines, 934 911 VoIP lines, those are all voice over internet protocol. Those are pretty much the ones that are connected to your computers or an internet connection. 34 telematic calls, those are from your vehicles. Whenever you get into an accident, that automatically calls 911, or if they press the emergency button within the vehicle. We've answered 34 of those. 595 10-digit emergency calls, those are the old, old numbers back in the day before 911 started. It was a 508-886. I believe the one around here is 4106 possibly. But each community has their own 10-digit emergency line, and we still receive calls through that. That's from the older population, because of the only ones that actually really remember that phone number. 979 administrative calls, those are between PSAPs, calls between PSAPs, calls being transferred between PSAPs, 4 text to 911 calls, 783 TTY, that's for the deaf and hard of hearing, which totals 7,667 911 classified calls. And altogether, 18,961 calls between business and 911, just alone in our center. And then adding on to that, the dispatch center has entered 72,000 calls into our records management system so far this year. And we're projected to surpass the 88,000 that we entered in last year. Moving on from that, well, not recently. Back in early March, I submitted my FY 2024 development grant to the State 911 Department in the amount of $1,283,329.87. This includes the assessment for Warren, the deputy director's salary, our radio system compliance upgrade, and IP voice screen recorder, and station alert and system for all police and fire departments throughout the five towns. And in regards to that, we should know the results of the rewards in late June to July. So it's been busy. That's pretty much all I got.
Questions? Oh, just a second, Dave. The radios.
Yes.
Is that, are those the radios that are in each town that I've been in meetings about?
So the one that I just mentioned?
Just mentioned.
No.
Okay, so.
So the radio system compliance upgrade, that is all the tower sites we own. They all have a single repeater for each frequency, so each tower has three repeaters. The manufacturer of those repeaters has recently announced that they will not be Apco P25 compliant no longer. So they don't meet the compliance that the State 911 requires throughout. So we're forced to start looking into upgrading that system. And that's, that took pretty much $656,000 to upgrade all our tower sites currently that we own.
Have you seen cell towers?
That's, so the towers are, not the towers, the antennas are up now, the feed lines are in. I believe the electricity should be turned on shortly, and then the radio engineer will be installing the equipment. So we're right around the corner, just about. Yes.
Shoulders getting a little?
Yes, just a little bit, yeah. It's been a long project, so.
Thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
Here in the stats, they're amazing, like how busy the center is and how much work crawls and everything with the center's speed. How does that compare to other centers that are of a similar-ish size? I know it's kind of hard.
Yeah, so the system that we pull our stats from, from the State 911, it only allows us to see our stats. So for me to grab that, I would have to reach out to multiple centers to receive all that data. So I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, I was just curious if you had any inclination or anything.
No, there's, there's going to be a study coming up soon to start pulling call stats, union contracts and salaries from all other towns to start preparing for the next contract. So I'll have that hopefully within the next few months.
Thank you.
Now that you're off the desk.
Yes, now I can do more work.
Time now?
Yes.
It does keep you, like, knowing what's going on.
Yes, it does. And I miss it from time to time, but I need to get back to my actual job duties, so.
Does anybody else have any?
Thank you, and thanks to all the dispatchers and everybody that is over there, because it's a tough job and kind of the unseen unsung heroes often, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
About your staff?
Again, yes, thanks, yes.
Hopefully we're.
Yeah, knock on wood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave McCray?
Yes, can you hear me?
Hi, we can now, thank you.
Okay, I got too muted on this phone. The only update last time I was here was on January 9th, not much has changed. Solar permits are very much increasing, repair and remodel leveling off. New homes are pretty constant, I think we've only had five totals since January. The Rutland Heights project, I still have not seen any plans for any of the buildings on that site today. They put a signed permit in for two banners on the front gate to advertise it. Other than that, the apartment B, they applied to start doing the interior finish work in walls at 80 Main Street. The gold facility also had put in a permit for doing the interior work as at 79 to 83 Main Street, the Blair complex. We're also looking into some of the other things with the accessibility issues to some of the building, town buildings, some automatic door openers and a code compliant bathroom for AAB, which is the Architectural Access Board, which is Massachusetts' version of the American Disabilities Act. And just a handful of other little odds and ends that need to be attended to.
Thank you, does anybody?
Is there any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for?
It's David's Leah, wait a minute. You said that the new home permits have only been about five since January. Is that kind of typical through the winter months? And do you expect to see that increase? Or is it, do you sense that there's a slowdown, or do you have any sense at all? Not, not, not like, sorry.
No, it does appear, it does appear across the board that a number of things are slowing down. Yeah, there's no question about that. But the solar permits are really increasing dramatically, it's probably three times over what was last year, maybe more.
If I may, on the solar, you may not know this answer. On the solar permit side, are residential users or consumers having any issues with grid and capacity? Or I know that was a bit, one of the big hindrances on some of the commercial projects that were slated for town and ended up not moving forward. I'm not sure if it's starting to hit on the residential side or not yet.
I wouldn't really know that, that'd be a question for Wes. I haven't heard any homeowners say anything except just complain about the cost of electricity.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. And I didn't mean that as an insult, it was my own.
No, 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 no.
I don't have any sense, I think is what I mean. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, David.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
Mr. Buckley?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Our last meeting with you.
You know, it's funny, I can't remember the last time I talked to the board. DPW doesn't get in a lot, usually unless it's a real emergency. So I'm just going to go through a couple of things. Namely, street sweeping is running a bit behind this year because of all the winter storm damage. We did get the schools swept during the break, but we had to go back to doing tree damage from that last storm, two feet of snow, a lot of ice in the storm previous. The playing fields are open, baseball's playing, and we got calls from soccer today, so you'll probably see soccer out practicing soon. For those who don't know, our chief water operator stepped down, and we're currently managing the water operations unit with in-house DPW staff. We're going to hold off, I have advised the town administrator to hold off filling that position until after the votes or what takes place at the town meeting. Plan construction, we have, we plan on putting roughly 1,000 feet of water main out for bid on Miles Road. That main has broken several times, and it causes roughly half a dozen homes to lose water. We have a lot more downstream of the piece we're replacing to also update, but at least this portion of Miles will restore service to those homeowners. On the wastewater side, we have a, Western Sampson Engineers is in the process of doing a sewer force main replacement design. The Miles Road pump station services roughly 20% of the town.
Dave, could you mute, or could somebody mute? I don't know if you can mute still.
Yep.
Thank you.
So on the wastewater side, the Miles Road design, sewer force main design is underway. It services roughly 20% of town, and it's original to the late 60s. It's also broken three times, and when that breaks, it causes environmental damage. We don't have funding in place for it yet, but if there were grant money, so you wanted to do something like SRF, the first step is getting a design in place. We have a lot of winter damage around town. We've gotten several calls about damaged berm, potholes, destroyed pavement. We had a big storm late in the season and not a lot of frost in the ground, so we saw a significant amount of plow damage. Two things come to the surface, between the fact that we're doing all the tree work, street sweeping's lagging behind, I don't see us getting to managing a lot of that plow damage anytime soon. Pending the outcome of the planned override and town meeting votes, that could get worse, but I just have to at least know that it's on, let you know it's on the radar. Myself, the town administrator, and Mr. Keller heard today, did our final negotiation for the union contract. We're pretty confident that it'll get approved by this group and eventually ratified by the union. But all the negotiations are done. Everybody, at least on the DPW side and the administration side and the staff side are happy. So hopefully it goes pretty good. I'm not going to get into details of like how much it'll cost, that's something the town administrator can put in front of you. We have funding in ARPA for one summer person to work to mow fields and help clean up around town. We do have an applicant, that person was here a year ago. He's a Rutland town resident, he's a student up at UMass Lowell, and he wants to come back, so we're going to offer him that job. I sent an email out with the press release for the town Holden for the sewer case. Do you have any immediate questions on that? I can try and tell you what we're doing here in Rutland regarding that.
Yeah, I think that would be good for anybody listening.
Yeah, I know I had conversations with you about it before, but I think having it out would be nice.
It's been, I'm sorry, it's been up, it's been talked about during information sessions and whatnot too, so.
The court, the court, the case was decided in Superior Court, the judge has finally published his decision, and that's what the press release speaks to. Do I think Holden, Worcester Appeal, I honestly can't speak to that. I personally remain hopeful that somebody from the governor's office will step in, having said that. Probably three or four months ago now, we met with the town's attorney, KP Law, but they have a wastewater specialist, his name is Attorney Greg Corbo. We reviewed all of the data. He felt at that time it was not prudent for the town to enter into any kind of suit to go back after overcharging. That ship had sailed is basically what he implied. What we decided to do was come up with a way to pay for what we deemed was a fair cost and continue to pay that to DCR in hopes they eventually get an agreement. And should they not, should DCR or the City of Worcester decide that they think that's unfair, they'd have to take legal action against the city, against the town. So in the short term, we're just sitting on the money and not modifying the rates, but that is the short-term plan. But again, it comes under the advice of attorneys, and I think I've sent everybody that information. So we're in a holding pattern, okay?
So those are the checks that you mentioned.
They're not getting cashed.
They're not being cashed, but we've sent them and.
Right.
And if I may, if I understand correctly, you're, we're sending not full, not full payment that they're requesting, but what we deem to be fair based on our internal contractor analysis and everything of what our flow and everything is.
Correct.
That excess between that and what we're charging the ratepayers is going into free cash, but shouldn't be free cash.
It wouldn't go into, it would go into water and sewer free cash, it'll go into retainerings, it won't go into the general fund.
No, no, but it's still, it's still going to go, I mean, it's going into the enterprises retained earnings or something. Is there any way that that can be, that amount can be marked, that that's what it's for, for the overage? If, if it comes back that we need, I just worry that we're going to say, oh, water and sewer has, the enterprise has all this retained earnings, when a chunk of it is earmarked, earmarked for that piece that either.
So really round numbers, to be able to, so a year ago, to send wastewater through Holden and through Worcester to where it's treated, probably cost the town somewhere around $800,000 or a million dollars, somewhere in that range. We went through all of Worcester stuff and contacted our consulting engineer and the attorney, and we basically have paid them half that amount to operate our utility at this time. They have, they being DCR, has not cashed any checks. Historically, DCR asked us to send the checks on to the City of Worcester, but given the court case, we decided not to, we sent it directly to DCR. And we've had, we have some history there, because we originally had trouble with the sewer meter at the town line, and we went back after the state to get that money, and they weren't too friendly about giving us any money back. So we stuck hard, stuck with what the attorney said, and we're just going to wait. So I, I wouldn't worry about that. I mean, they'd have to, A, they'd have to sue us, and then try and come back after us for the money. I think you got some time. And we're the, and I, it's funny, we're the little fish in all that. There's much bigger at play. So the only thing I have left is the stormwater issue, and I heard from staff at EPA as recently as yesterday, not yesterday, not yesterday, Thursday, Thursday of last week. And interestingly enough, that person went through the one she's in school district and became an environmental scientist and now works for EPA. And I had a very candid conversation with that person, and I asked them to get us something in writing, we haven't seen it yet. But Rutland's on their radar for two reasons. It's one thing not to fund stormwater management and compliance, it's another thing to completely not do it as well. So we're, we come to the, and that person's argument was, we make everybody else do it, it's kind of unfair. So I think you've got more coming on that, and I hope that someone puts some stock in investing in the utility, but can't speak to that. So any questions for me on projects, or?
Sorry, tip? I know it's not in your hand, like, not in your hands, but can you just give a brief update on what's going on? Because I know everything is starting.
They started today, they being, you're talking about the 56 job?
Yeah.
Sure. That's in Mass DOT control, but the town did pay for all the engineering. And we paid probably close to a million dollars over five or six years. So we're heavily invested in that project. We have our, we still have our consulting engineer, CHA, basically on retainer to process things like submittals and design changes, and we're holding on to some Chapter 90 money, because you always need contingencies with big construction projects. Even though it's a federally funded tip project, it's being ran by the state, it's possible the town may still have to come up with some additional funds as the project goes on. It's a two-and-a-half-year project, at least, maybe go as much as three. It's my understanding that Contractor Maurice Concrete hopes to go from Main Street to culvert by the pond with drainage sidewalk and initial pavement this year.
And just for anybody listening, this project has been in the works for 10 years or longer. I mean, this is since our first, maybe even before our first town administrator. So this is a very long vested ongoing project that is not just happening suddenly.
No, no, it's more like, yeah, 10 years in the making. It's got stalled two or three times. There were some real design challenges and some funding challenges in and around the dam and the culvert that goes under the road. Ultimately, what we ended up doing was agreeing, the town basically agreed to fund the dam repair, and that made the culvert, it made it possible to qualify the culvert as qualifying, and that is, that piece is being covered by the federal money, the tip money.
All the easements and takings have all been worked out?
Have all been processed.
Through the chair, I've had a couple of questions recently about the Little League, the parking in front.
It's gone.
No, I understand that, but do you think we'll make it through the season, or? No, I understand that, but do you think we'll make it through the season or do you have any idea and?
The only thing I, I think we'll get through a good chunk of the season. They started doing drainage, they being the contractor started with drainage at the culvert or at the pond. And they, you know, that's at least two months worth of work.
Oh, so they're coming up.
They're coming up there.
Okay. And next question.
Old school drainage, you always start at the low point and work your way back up.
Okay, so the season's done roughly June-ish, July, somewhere in there with Paul's.
And we said you could use DPW's lot if you.
Right, DPW and also the clearing out back. Is that safe to park on?
Yep, it's sound, yep. It's been compacted and covered in millings and it's safe to use. The only problem is, you know, balls.
Well, that's, yeah, you park at your own risk.
We got that on, parking on Palmigusset.
But in all candor, I met with four or five engineers from Mass DOT and we had a conference call, probably six months or a year ago. And they basically said, look, this parking is too dangerous for this road.
Yeah.
Somebody's going to get hurt, it's got to go.
Yeah, thankfully it hasn't happened, but yeah, it's amazing.
So we had to acquiesce on that. There was no way to make the parking work.
Right.
What's the best way to access the lot back here? The cleared space?
You're talking behind the ball field?
Yeah, yeah.
That's only accessible by 56.
By like through the snack shack area and everything.
Right by the field, yeah.
We did come up with a plan to put, to start filling in the area between the ball field and the DPW lot. And I ran that by Conservation Commission. We have no funding in place for this, but we will take construction spoils from the Palmigusset road job and the Miles construct, Miles water main construction job to fill in that area and eventually build an access road there.
So you drive through DPW and around?
No, you'll, no, it's right between the two.
Oh, okay.
So the DPW gate will have to be moved, but you'll come down alongside right the gate and access the back of the ball field that way.
At the bottom of the hill there.
We're going to fill it all in.
Oh, wow.
All of this is recorded somewhere, right?
Yep. I put it in writing. I met with the Mass DOT residential engineer. His name is Roger Wykes. Roger is also a town resident. And I also met with the Conservation Commission and reviewed it with them as well.
I was also alluding to the institutional knowledge that you're taking with you.
I've only been here four and a half years. There isn't that much there.
You've had a lot of projects.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. I think there was a lot that you got done in a short amount of time. So thank you for, with not a lot of resources. So thank you for everything that you've done and the knowledge that you brought in and are hoping to keep here with us. Brain dump, brain dump.
If anything, I overwrote. I always document too much, so this, it's got to be down there someplace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, just as a side note, Austin, I don't know if you know that the water and sewer are eligible purposes under the earmarks as well.
Yep. If I may?
Yes.
Just while he's here, when I echo the board sentiment, I know it's been, this is week three of working with you. And I, but I want to say I appreciate, I've been a fan of your work over the past few years as a, just a viewer of Rutland government. But I think obviously there's been a lot of good work that Mr. Buckley has, has done and provided to the Department of Public Works and overall the, the town operations. So I want to thank you. Certainly, I think there's big, big shoes to fill, which is one of our agenda topics. So that dovetails nicely just to talk about, and I asked George to stay at least for this discussion to answer any board questions as we, as we talk through this, so.
Could I just say one thing?
Sure.
Thank you all for your kind words and thank you for giving me the chance to do this job. I like Rutland. The people I work with at DPW and most of the town offices are great. It's been a little challenging with the financial side of the coin. I mean, just in all candor, my budget's been cut every year for the last four years and this last go around was too much for me to take on. And I know all of you, none of you want to do that and you're facing some real challenges. And I hope you come up with some good concrete solutions. But again, thank you for all of your kind words and I wish you the best in the future. Having said that, what can we do?
Yeah, so, so the transition in DPW leadership has, I think, provides an opportunity for us to, to take a look at the big picture of the operations of the department. Obviously, there's a lot of work that is provided through the Department of Public Works, through the, both on the roadside of the house, if you will, but then also the, the infrastructure and then everything else, right? So public buildings, stormwater, everything that's, that's related that flows through, through the department and especially through Joe's office. So there's, I think, some opportunities here to, to take advantage of external or internal staff, but also some of the relationships that we have with, with some of our partners. So in the interim, I just want to let the board know that we have had discussions with our partners, Western and Sampson, and we're having another conversation with CHB.
So what I did, do you mind if I go ahead?
Go for it.
What I did in the short term was I, I brought in Western and Sampson's brass, basically, and we walked through every project they're currently working on and briefed Austin. We did the same with Time Bond. Time Bond does not have a lot in town right now, but they're handling the electrical upgrade at the, at Naqog Elementary School. That's a kind of a tricky design because it's old. And the fire chief is going to act as liaison for that, for the completion of that project. The only one left for Austin to be with is CHA and that's the consulting engineer for the 56 job. And candidly, our, we, everyone involved has agreed to answer the phone if Austin calls and any help in any way they can. So the, those, the, the wheels won't fall off of those projects is what I'm trying to say. Western Sampson's also a good ally to have with water and sewer. Not so much on the, the fact that you're going to run out of drinking water or the sewer's not going to work. It's more like the federal compliance and the state compliance is can be really tricky. And you'll get letters saying you have to do X, Y, and Z and they're a good resource to have. So anyways, we set up those relationships in advance and at least you'll have some tools to work with.
And, and so those relationships, I think, will help, as Joe mentioned, you know, keeping some projects moving along, but making sure that some of the operations that maybe were typically handled through Joe are able to, you know, to, to be continued and accomplished. So, but in terms of leadership at, at the DPW, we are looking to start that recruitment process as soon as possible. What I'm looking for direction from the board in terms of a conversation tonight is, candidly, there's a, there's a couple of options in terms of the recruitment process and the selection process. So as folks are familiar, obviously there's a screening committee route that we, we can appoint a committee of some internal, but also some subject matter experts in the field to assist with the, with the recruitment of new DPW leadership. But then there's also the consultant route, like what you folks have done in finding your administrator, but also Joe when he was recruited several years ago, police chief. So I think it's been, that route has been taken as well in the past. So I would just like to, to kind of gauge the interest of the board and move forward in the recruitment process, but just looking to see what the sentiment of the board is moving forward. If we can have that discussion now, what you're thinking.
Through the chair, personally, I would, I would recommend just having somebody acting. This board is going to change in a week. I think if you're going to decide on a process, it would be more appropriate to do it with the, whether it will be going through the process.
Yeah, so I, so I agree. So I've had those conversations as well with, with some members and outside and internally to see who can help in the interim. But certainly I think we need to figure out and identify a process moving forward. So I'm not asking for a decision tonight on, on an interim. I'm asking for the long-term process on, on leadership. And once that process has been identified, I can come with a plan for an acting or an interim. But also I didn't, we need to move forward because I don't want to leave the acting or the interim with a TBD on when you're ending. I need some direction moving forward on, on selecting the new leadership.
I mean, we have to.
Can I just say?
Yeah.
One quick thing, if that's all right. DPW is real thin. All that's really, we have no engineering staff. There's no other management really. Everyone else is union and to their credit, they do everything. I mean, the foreman will get in an excavator or get in a grader and go fix a road. When the chief water operator was here, I've seen him cut lawns at the water plant. The takeaway from all that is there's no real DPW middle management or someone you could manipulate to slide into that role easily. You might be able to consider taking some of the, you know, like the budget work and the big project planning stuff out and do the day-to-day stuff. I think they'll be okay with that in the short term, but again, I, we're very lucky. We have a great dedicated staff who does a lot with absolutely nothing. But again, there's just nobody really there. Thanks.
And, and I think that, you know, in Joe's position, Joe, you're too good in a way to where, no, and I really mean this in a way. I think Joe has helped the department from a lot of the big picture and planning and making sure that we're moving forward, developing, you know, capital plans and, and setting a good path, I think, for outside funding source opportunities to make sure projects are funded. So that's a lot of the big picture engineering kind of work. So whether we, you know, look for assistance from that perspective, whether it's internally or, or externally through some consultants or, or contracting out some of those services, which many communities do. But certainly, as Joe mentioned, I think there's, you know, the, the daily operations of, of the department that need to be achieved. So while Joe has, I think, done a great job handling both, you know, there's a couple of different routes there that, that we could certainly explore and move forward. But I really am looking for, for a path to identify leadership for, for the department, you know. Biggest departments.
If I, if I may, like full-time leader, like full-time permanent leadership, right? So I think, I personally feel like a town this size and a department that would hopefully be funded to where it, on the lean side, but still where it should be versus where it currently is, we need a perf, we need professional, a professional in there to, to do some more of the administrative and big picture planning and just to exactly what you spoke. I'm not 100% sure if we do that ourselves within a, a screening committee put together, I assume by the administrator's office, what that, what that pool of candidates is versus a firm. I know when we were searching previously, there, the, the pool of candidates is not generally large in the sense of at the professional level. And then you start looking at the, the budget constraints and dynamics within town over the past decade or so in, in DPW in Rutland. So I kind of want to do what I, what you two maybe have a little bit of a sense as to what may get us the most bang for our buck and also a, a leader down there. And then hopefully we can coalesce around some support for the department with the override and also extra than that, whether, you know, so.
Through the chair, I think it's important we have to have qualified people find these, you know, I'm not qualified to pick a DPW director. So I think we need to go the same route as we did to hire you and you. I mean, we need professionals to find the next guy. That's my opinion.
We need professionals, but we are not some, we cannot expend any money.
That's what I was going to say too.
We know that costs, yes, $10,000 we don't have right now. So is there, is there any, I guess we're saying, is there anything that we can? Yes, please.
With our new town administrator and the experience he's got, I do think that he could get it started off the ground without us spending a ton of money. And if it looks like it's going to fail along the way, we can also, we always can go back to hiring somebody.
I was, I was thinking that as you started saying, you know, is there something that we can do at, at low cost to no cost? I know there's cost to, to advertising even, but to start the process. Because even if we start with a firm and go through all the process of hiring a firm and all of that, we're looking at least another two weeks to even do that. So is there something that we can try ourselves?
Mind if I go ahead? The cold reality is with all of the tax levy side cuts against DPW, taxes isn't paying for much anyways. We've only got a couple of people. The services have been cut back quite a bit. So the result is 65% of your DPW budget is water and sewer. Water and sewer is an enterprise account. They are healthy. You could move some money from retained earnings to cover that if you wanted to. So you don't have to go after taxes. And I think when you look at the size of the operation and, and everything we do in water and sewer versus what's, what little is left of the tax supported side, you could justify it. So I would say there is some money there you could manipulate.
I, I think, and this is a little bit against what my previous point stance has been. I think Austin comes in with a lot of background knowledge and connections to, to make those connections and see about what he, what we as a town can find ourselves. I would argue that, and again, this is against my, but there's also, we still have some ARPA funds. And I think when we searched, the search for DPW superintendent was less than a administrator search, about half or two thirds.
That's not fair.
So, so we do have, I, I just want to also put it out there that that is an option, one that I, again, haven't advocated for and also can see value to it. So I, I'm kind of torn. That's kind of why I was looking to, to you guys to get a sense.
I think our new town administrator's got enough on his plate already. I mean, I think it's dangerous to put more on her.
Through the chair, I have a problem with water and sewer users paying the bill. You know, I, I don't think that's appropriate. I know that they would, the individual will be running water and sewer as well, but I don't think that the ratepayers should be forking up the money for it. I don't think that's appropriate, in my opinion.
I think I agree. I would be more, I would be more inclined to use ARPA for that than I would be and see it as an investment for support, for a professional leadership in town, if that's the route that we, that we go.
Dude, we don't have that much ARPA money left, do we? We, last meeting, we got rid of a good deal of it.
We left a lot of, we left some on the table.
So is the biggest concern the funding? Or is the biggest concern, sorry to interrupt you.
I think, I think it's funding. For me, I see it's.
That's all it is, it's just the money?
It's funding and time.
Yeah. So you want to get a new boss in there or a new DPW director at some.
Are you suggesting?
No, but I'm just saying.
Do it some other way for a short term?
No, 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 I'm just, so is it just the funding or is it the, because I just need to understand that.
No, I, I think, I think the funding and maybe we can, maybe we can use ARPA money for it. But just knowing how long it took to find three or ended up being two firms that we, that we interviewed and it, it is just a longer process, but if that's the route that people want to go.
It's just such an important position.
I know.
We have so many things going on.
That's fine. And I could say by the next time you get some people in here, this board will be a different makeup and you can make your, make the decision.
If I may, I think when we did the search with Joe, I think, I think it was the administrator's office at the time that kind of, I think Bob Reed helped decide on what firm would be best. And it was kind of, it was less of an interview. I don't remember interviewing search firms. I think it was.
We didn't interview anybody.
Right, for the firm, for the, so I think that that process is a little bit different on, on a non-administrator side of the search, but I.
So would everybody, I, I don't, I don't know if you want to say, look at, look and see how much it costs? Then we know, unless you already have looked into that and know how much it costs.
Yeah, I think the costs that were out there that have already been mentioned are approximately what a, what a search would be like. I think no more than, just to be conservative, $10,000. I don't think it would be anywhere close to that. Certainly it depends on which firm you go with and, and as you remember with, with my search process, there's no a la carte options that you can add to the search process, but that certainly was for the administrator. But if the board sought to go that route, I would certainly probably recommend the use of ARPA for that search process because of, you know, limited constraints in our existing funds. But on the search committee route, if the board had, if it seemed the board was leaning in that direction, I've already had some conversations with some folks that I know in, in the. the Water and Sewer industry and the public works industry that just to seek if they'd be interested in serving on such a committee led by the administrator. So we would be advertising a position and, and, you know, doing a comprehensive recruitment process.
Well, you're either, either gonna oversee, you're either gonna oversee a firm or you're going to, to do.
So involved anyways.
Which do you want to do?
Right. What, what do you think? What do you want?
I know it's a little easier. And, and, you know, a little easier in terms of the day-to-day workload would be a consultant. However, I recognize that I didn't take this job, recognizing that it would be easy. And I do have contacts that would be willing and able to serve on a committee. So if the board had opted and directed me to go that route, I think we could find just as qualified candidates. The good thing about some of the folks that have expressed interest, they're already in the network of Water, Sewer, Public Works. So you know, they had mentioned that they were able to share within some of the Mast dot Public Works Directors Network and some of the other sites that maybe I don't know about. Obviously we'll, we'll recruit on, you know, Mass Municipal and the ones that we do know about, but they would be able to provide assistance on kind of getting the word out there for someone they may know who may be interested.
And you feel confident with that?
I think we could go that route if, if that's what the board directed.
I, um, if I could just jump in, and I understand why you wouldn't, why Lyndon, you wouldn't want to use Water and Sewer repairs. I, I can respect that. But I would caution everybody, you're gonna want a strong Water and Sewer person. If you just look at the compliance forecasting down the road, the forever chemicals, the PFAS, they, Mast EP has said that can bankrupt some towns. It's going to be a very big challenge. Compliance for Mast EP for sewers, namely the SSO and the, the II compliance, also a big task. And you're still looking down and it is sewer, Water and Sewer related, but it's funded differently, the stormwater. You're, we've already been put under orders. I, whatever you do, I would just strongly suggest you consider getting a strong Water and Sewer candidate.
I, I would not have implied that we don't need a strong Water.
No, no, I know. You just.
As far as where the funds are coming from.
And I said that, yeah.
Um, if, I, I think given the, the the budget issues that DP, take out the override and just historic budget concerns. I think ha- there is benefit to having in, an administrator appointed to have some more candid conversations about what, what is hap- what has been happening at DPW on the fiscal, on the budgetary side and, and, and how that looks. I think from the administrator's side, I argued against that a little bit because I felt like the administrator should be looking, watching the videos and, and coming in with a little bit of a, a fresh perspective. Where I think DPW has continually been chopped for, for decades plus, that, that there could be some value to having someone come in with a little bit more personal dialogue about the, the state of, of that department. And, and not the state at the be- because of any one person or anything. It's the budgetary state. So I don't know if that makes sense.
Okay. So I think, I think we're leaning toward you spearheading this, Austin? As in getting ads out and working with your networking? If that's, if that, if you're okay with that, then.
Just a point of order, we, we haven't accepted the resignation.
Oh.
So we're, we're, we're already in, we're already voting on it.
We don't need to.
We don't, we don't need to?
It's not a board of.
Oh, even though it's a, okay.
I did notify the town administrator in writing and I do believe it went to the town clerk.
No, I know. I just thought the board had to.
No, I don't, yeah.
It's select board confirmation, but town administrator appointment. And the reason why this is different, for example, with the assistant town clerk is it is the board's responsibility to appoint records access officers, hence why it was suggested that you accept that resignation versus this.
Just a couple of things in my time here that I think would be really beneficial for whoever comes in. We're weak on the purchasing front. Austin's gonna need some help and some backup with the purchasing. You know, when you come to do DPW or DPW director here in Rutland, you wear a lot of hats. You do your own personnel, you're doing your own budgeting, you do your own purchasing. And I think purchasing compliance with state laws and prevailing wage and the like, I, I think that needs to be formalized a little better townwide. And I think whoever comes in to take over is going to need that. It's something I talked to Austin about and you said you wanted to look into that, but I just want to call that out. That needs to be cleaned up. Because it's proven to be problematic on a couple of fronts.
And I was gonna say, is there a way that we can send you a list of what we see as an outsider? I mean, I don't have as much access with Joe as I maybe should, but just, I was gonna say, I think having a, a CPO back person or willing to do that route is valuable and well-versed or able to become quickly well-versed in state and federal. And we heard Water and Sewer is important, like all of it, obviously, but.
So do we need a motion for this? Or is this just?
I, I think I was just looking for general consensus. If we were spending money, I think we'd need a motion, but if we're not spending money, you know, motion.
And if, if I may, it sounds like if it becomes too cumbersome, Austin, or it doesn't seem feasible, that bring it back and we can revisit. And obviously it'll be a new board by that point, but at least this is at least a path forward now.
Yeah, I don't want you to think I didn't have faith in you. I have total faith in you, but it's just so much. I, I just don't want you to be overwhelmed.
This is the beginning of my third week and there's a lot that's happened already.
After next week, it'll be either worse or maybe a little better.
You could have a lot less to manage, who knows?
Some of the town managers I talked to when I talked about this position, they said nothing should surprise, should surprise you, so. I guess this is par for the course, but.
That's your new mantra, nothing should surprise me.
Thanks, Joe. All right, guys.
Thank you, Joe, and good luck. We miss you.
Enjoy the beach.
Yes.
I just have a few more from my updates. So there was a question about some of the staffing in the community. So Joe had, had mentioned vacancy in the chief water operator. So there's certainly, I think, some, some vacancies that exist in some town departments that whether through just uncertainty in the, in the, in the budget season, they haven't been filled. Or on the opposite side, requirements to fulfill some obligations, like in the clerk's office. There, you know, there's been vacancies that have been filled. So candidly, I think I'm, I'm hoping to take an assessment after Monday and really looking and seeing where we are from, for funding levels and making decisions about positions and how they should be, how they should be filled over the next few months. And then of course, the, the, as the fiscal year starts, so. You know, candidly, I think if you look in the landmark, some of the budget challenges that we have, or if you're talking around town, people are familiar with some of the challenges that we're having. So, you know, that may pose challenges on, on the recruitment side of the house for some of these positions that there's uncertainty if they'll be funded in the upcoming year. So, but we still have work to do and sometimes that requires staffing or a lot of times that requires staffing. So my commitment to town departments and town staff is that we will provide the support where we can to make sure that they have the resources they need to get the work done. So from a staffing perspective, if we need to, to be creative and find ways to provide those resources, that's how I view things. And we need to, ultimately, we still need to be able to make sure that buildings are open and that the services that are requested by, by the public are, are provided. So I don't know if there's any questions on, on staffing particularly that I can answer.
No, but I am just gonna say, you, you were eloquent and I think that maybe people, anybody that's listening to this before town meeting and, and the polls is, we have lost staff and we may still lose staff to the uncertainty of whether they'll have a job if the override doesn't go through. So that is not, that's just us. We have supported the override as, as everybody knows. But that's a little less eloquent, but I think maybe more understandable. You've tried to, I think, make it seem a little nicer than it is. So, you know, get out, vote your conscience.
Yeah, I think you said it. I've been saying our staff are our largest asset and, and to see what, what is potentially coming is, is hard, a hard pill to swallow. And so I appreciate you and everyone that's working through it and has been working through it, because I know it hasn't been easy. And, you know, Gary and Tamika and FinCom and everybody has been hardworking. So I think it's unfortunately.
Up to, up to the people now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thanks.
And I have a couple more unrelated to staffing. If there's no other questions or comments? Alrighty. So on some fun and good news. This is the beginning of my third week, so I'm still getting to know some of the town departments and, and town staff. So last week I had an opportunity to meet with Nancy Council on Aging and took a, took a tour of, of the building and, and got to meet some, some volunteers that were working on. One was fixing a piano, one was doing some gardening out front. So gotta kind of take a tour of the operations and see some of the services that are provided and identify some of the needs that, that department may particularly have. Also had an opportunity to tour this wonderful building and had a great meeting with the director to talk about, again, similarly, some of the programs that are provided. Again, some of the challenges that, that, that we have. That's been helpful to get to know our town departments. Also had an opportunity to meet with, or attend a monthly meeting with the school district, school administration and the, and the five towns, town administrators for the school district. Most of it was focused on, on financial updates as we're starting to close, or as the schools starting to close out the year, where we're looking in terms of excess and deficiency, things like that. Obviously they're closing out previous years, so there's been some positive news. It was mentioned at the budget form yesterday, the over $1 million overspending issue through reconciliation is now down in around the 400s. So which is, is some positive news. They're able to.
Can I interrupt and ask something? As I was reading that, the emails that came through, listening to how it was presented at the informational meeting on, yesterday, they took the $1.6 million and kind of emptied out some other. Do you think that we're really gonna see a savings or do you think they're gonna try to repopulate all of that money again? They're gonna put everything back? So I don't, I'm not holding my breath.
Yeah, so.
For that savings.
So, so we won't see those savings. Those will, I assume we'll go back to those revolving funds, which are used for various things. You know, circuit breakers, school, uh, school lunch. So those, those are paying for the services that are provided by the school district. You know, the challenge when you deplete your revolving funds is you have to find a way to fund those from other ways. So whether it's through assessments or, you know, again, other funding sources. So, you know, it's, it is a good, it is a good, it is good news that it is obviously, the problem isn't as much as we thought it was. So they can still have healthy balances in those revolving funds to still provide the operations and services that are needed. There was also talk a little bit yesterday, but particularly in this meeting, the school district is recognizing that the, they're sending towns that have had some significant changes in population. So the, the school district is looking for grant funds to fund a population growth study, to look at all five towns and see, oh, one, what has changed over the past several years in terms of our, our population, but also to kind of project out, looking at some of the development. They've already been in contact with, with the assessor's office, planning office to look at potential upcoming developments to see how that may impact. I know I talked a little bit about that in my communications with the public about kind of forecasting, if you will. So I think that's a, that's a positive initiative for us that I think will be helpful as we plan in the future. Had an opportunity to attend the townwide yard sale, the very famous or infamous townwide yard sale. It was a little wet in the beginning, but I was able to pick up some, some interesting materials from residents, which was great. Also saw Lyndon at the library yesterday as well, or not yesterday, Saturday. But I was able to attend the book sale, which I did not know existed. So just a quick shout out to the book sale. It's a dollar a book, but then also if you want to fill up a very large bag for $5, which I did.
What a great deal.
Recommend anyone to stop by. I think it's the last, it's the last Saturday of every month.
Month of your last Saturday.
Something that I didn't know about, but is great and I'll certainly be back. Want to thank the library for hosting several budget forms for the public. The last one was hosted yesterday. We had attendance from Superintendent Riley, Dr. Riley and Dave George, the town planner, two public safety chiefs, as well as, as the treasurer collector to talk about needs of the override and how the budget would impact them if the override doesn't pass. So I want to thank departments for, for attending over the past, past several weeks. And I just want to close out. I mentioned it, like previously in passing, that Senator Govey's office had reached out to us seeking earmark requests. So we did submit several projects for consideration to be included in the state budget. I can give you detail in writing, but just to, just to go over the department that we had asked for funding for is Recreation Department for feasibility study. Upgrades to the library, town hall, or funding to assist with upgrades to the library, town hall and community center. Director Moriarty also asked for several projects to, to fund some of the initiatives that he's working on. And then also asking for assistance in, in site clearing and marketing promotion of the Rutland Heights property. So we asked for several million dollars of, of assistance and hoping that we received some positive news from the Senator as they proceed through the budget process.
Shoot for the stars, land on the moon. Or is it the other way? Moon to land on the stars, but thank you.
That's it.
Any comments or?
Thank you. I just wanted, I've been watching the budgets, the information sessions and I think the library, the Harry and the Board of Trustees have done a phenomenal job putting those together. And I appreciate everybody that's attended them because I think it's really valuable listening to resident questions. I think there's a lot of confusion and just not clear knowledge on how local government works. And so I appreciate that tremendously. So thank you to everybody that's been there and for the residents that are showing up because it shows that they really care. And they're asking good, hard questions that I think sometimes we forget are there because we're so in it. So I appreciate it on a lot of levels.
Also through the chair, I just got my card today.
I did too.
From the Council on Aging and Library. So that was.
Friends.
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 Not, not the ones that get money, the friends.
Friends of this prize. But no, that was great.
That's, that's nice for people to see that aren't kind of paying attention. Save that to read. So I apologize, but I have to leave.
Thank you. With that, he's out of here. Anything else, Austin? You're all good.
Uh, just staff are preparing for, for town meeting and the town election. So this week is sort of a last minute flurry, if you will, to finalize some things. But also just get ready for the, the wonderful annual operation that is town meeting and town elections.
You'll, you'll be waiting with bated breath for that, and I, I know.
Is there, if I may, do you need help with anything preparing or does, do any of the offices need help? I know in the past we tried to help, like even just shuttle copies or whatever if needed. And I know Town Clerk's Office has had some turn, turnover and staffing constraints and everything. So if you need any help, put a blast out to me at least, us, and we can try to fill in, even, like I said, even if it's just shuttling stuff.
All right. Under new business, we have been, the board has been asked by some of the folks with crumbling foundations to provide a letter of support for some bills, Senate bills. There's an S 495 and an S 2242. I don't know if anybody has read them. I, my, my question was that they, are, is, are we, are they looking for support for both of these? Because one looks like an older one and one looks like a newer one. There's a lot of identical wording on, on them.
So through the chair, I thought the original one we already did.
They, they won.
That bill did not move forward. And so this is a newly proposed bill.
So obviously didn't carry a lot of weight, so I don't know why they're asking us again.
So do you, do you know, is, is. So do you, do you know, is, is, are they looking for both of them or are they looking for the twenty-two?
Yeah, so. So they are looking for support from both. Um, and I can just briefly, um, I did read them. Some wonderful legislative language in there. Um, but the, the gist of both of them, uh, just for the general public to, to know as well. Obviously, there's been um some, some challenges that homeowners are finding in terms of their, their foundations due to um, what really is, really is, you know, poor quality of, of the concrete or, or materials that were used um, to build those foundations. So uh the Senator um and and many others have co-sponsored a bill in a previous session, but also was refiled in this new session uh to support two things. Uh, and the gist of these two bills, while a lot of the language is very similar, uh, one of them is, is uh associated with the testing for quarries, we're mandating testing for quarries to um provide an analysis and look at the materials that are, are being exported from um, from their operations to make sure that those materials of a, of a, of are a higher quality uh that will be included in the concrete um and other materials that are used to pour those concretes or, or, or pour those foundations. Um, so that is essentially mandated testing. The other bill is establishing uh a fund for homeowners to seek relief to repair their crumbling foundations. Um, so this would be a state funding source that would be provided and homeowners would have the opportunity to seek funding from that state funding source um to be able to conduct those repairs. Um, while there's no funding source particularly identified for this fund, the fact is it's establishing the fund in the first place and then allowing for uh whether it's use of federal infrastructure dollars or uh appropriation from, from state general funds. Uh, this would allow that mechanism to be uh to be used for homeowners. So this is kind of just the first step for the state to be able to set up this fund. So I think the Senator is just looking for a little bit of momentum from communities, especially communities. I think there's been some challenges or issues in Rutland specifically, which is why obviously she's seeking support from uh from the board, so.
So, and I, it, it's difficult to read this legislature. Anyway, but one of them, the, the, the four ninety-five talks about the surplus fee receipts shall be deposited into the crumbling concrete assistance fund. And the SS four twenty, twenty-two forty-two is saying, provided however, that any surplus receipts shall be deposited into the general fund. So I'm I, I, I wanna be careful about what we're advocating for and I, uh, first of all, crumbling foundations is, it's, it's horrendous. Um, and it's, it's, it's bad materi- bad minerals in, in the, in the aggregate. But um, I mean, we, we'll do whatever the board wants to do. I guess I'm just I, I also have in the back of my mind when we went as a green community that there, there was, you know, I don't know, I wasn't around when it happened. But you know, now learning that new building constructions cannot have oil tanks, which just completely you know, uh, took an industry out of, out of Rutland. Um, and it's, it is a concern for citizens that I've heard about. So I just wanna make sure that we don't unknowingly say, oh yes, let's jump on this cause it's a great idea and a great cause without knowing everything.
Through the chair. So uh, uh, my understanding was that the first funds, those fees go to feed the second fund to pay for any pe- people that wanna apply for repairs. And if for some reason those funds aren't utilized, which I can't imagine what, what the cost is, then they would go back to the general fund.
Okay.
So I, uh, my understanding is the first fund is feeding into the second fund and the second fund isn't utilized, it goes back to the general fund. Is that correct? Is that?
That's my general understanding as well, yeah. And of course, this is their initial um filing. Uh, so this bill is obviously subject to committee review and, and um on both sides of the, the legislature as well, so. But this initial language sets up that structure that you mentioned.
And I, and I was also wondering, some of it, some of it seems to be at the, at the source and other is at the state and town level. And it sounds like we need to have we'll be collecting fees that we have to have our building, our building instruct inspector needs to be um, it, not inspecting it necessarily, but having to receive a lot of paperwork and documentation. And so there is that burden that's placed on the town. And I'm, I, as, I'm, again, I'm gonna stop and say, Karen, if you're listening, I'm not saying I don't wanna do this, but I just wanna make sure that we aren't signing up for something that we can't understand in this bill. And that was my question. They're gonna, what is funding these things? Cause these foundations have to be, we're talking the hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're not talking about here's a couple of thousand dollars to help you out. So is it doing enough? Should we be holding out for something more? I, I don't know.
Think maybe a friendly amendment to, to both or e- or either letter, or if it was a joint letter, would be to maybe just add language. Um, in terms of, you know, people love the phrase unfunded mandates, but if there's additional burdens that are on town staff and departments, maybe a language in there that um, you know, is seeking assistance, whether it's through this fund uh or through an increase in uh our state aid, um, to be able to provide.
Some kind of administrative.
Yeah, but also you think of marketing, right? I mean, um, a lot of the information ends up flowing through the local government anyways. Um, so just in terms of getting the word out there, I think providing some sort of assistance to our town operations to be able to do that, I think would be helpful as well.
Well, as you mentioned yesterday, and, and I've heard it before from you, you know, there's the twenty percent that's from cannabis. And but seventy percent of that's going to the state and the burden, the burden is on the town and we're getting three percent. So it, I, chapter seventy money for transportation and for the schools and all of that stuff. And the lot, you know, there's a lot of promises that are made that end up as a burden on the towns. And I know that I can't fix the state right now, but you know.
You can't?
It sounds like we have a lot of people now that are interested in thinking, in talking to people. Um, in my story for another day or project for another day, but.
I would, I would, I'll just make a motion to send a letter of support with a um amendment to however the town administrator wants to award it covering any kind of administrative expenses to the town.
Shelter, sheltering the, sheltering the burden of administration from the towns would be cool.
I think, I'll second it. I, if I may, I agree kind of continuing to call out when we send these letters of support that this is going to create unfun- we support this wholly and it's going to create an additional unfunded burden on an already strapped smaller town. And so I think we haven't, I say we, but I think town, cities and towns haven't necessarily been so great about continuing to highlight those needs at the state level every single time. And so I think if we can coalesce around doing that, um, it's showing that we're not, not supportive and you're breaking the camel's back, like. So, thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you. Um, can I have a roll call vote on writing the letter?
Look, I.
Nickel's eye.
Wait a minute.
Benoid eye. I'm glad it's, I'm glad it's in a forward moving position. I'm just, sitting on this board, I just also wanna make sure that the town is protected and, and it, it sounds horrible to even say it out loud. I know. Promises made and never kept. Um, fire department budget. And he made it from OKM.
Yes, I did. How was Seth? Good?
Very well, very well. Uh, just to update you, I had a meeting in OKM this evening uh with their board selectmen. Um, we are at the end of our third year of our municipal agreement, providing ambulance services. They voted to continue, uh, uh, there's an option in to continue for two more years. They voted to continue that. Um, and they were concerned with the budget situation going on here, that what, what impact would it have over there? And so we reassured them that um, even if the override does fail, the staffing uh that we have will continue to support them. Um, and in turn, that revenue that comes from there helps support us. Uh, so it's a win-win on everyone's behalf. So I just wanted to reassure them and to also inform you of uh what's been going on there. So that's good news, very good news. Um, the reason why I brought this forward is obviously, you know, the budget constraints and everything. The fire department, we are one department and we operate out of three separate distinct budgets within uh the town budget line items. Um, this goes back to nineteen seventy-eight when the town formed the ambulance service. Um, the ambulance, ambulance service at the time was a, a separate distinct group of people that started the ambulance service. The revenue generated from billing then uh was brought in and went into the general fund and that's the way it's always been set up. So any ambulance revenue that came in always went to the general fund and then the town would support the line item budget to support that uh process. Well, back in nineteen seventy-eight, there was no full-time staff. Um, it was basically, you could almost say it's a third service. It was an independent body. Um, they had its own command structure, everything. It was, you know, maybe under the umbrella of the fire department, it was housing the fire station, but it was budgeted and, and staffed separately. Um, here we are forty-five years later. Um, things have changed. And ever since um two thousand two, when the town hired its first full-time firefighter, that's where the ambulance service did not, there should have been some changes made then. Because if you were trying to truly track the true cost center of what the ambulance service costs versus the fire department costs, then salaries should have been looked at a little differently when the full-time staffing started coming on. You may do sixty-five percent of our calls are ambulance related versus fire. And some people say, well, you could split their salaries in, in that fashion. But when it comes down to day-to-day operations and the hours worked in the station, you know, the firefighters are doing um code enforcement, issuing permits, um, checking fire apparatus. So you could, their time is almost split fifty-fifty. The problem arises is the way it's set up is a full-time firefighter comes back for a structured fire in town. Or they go mutually to another town for a fire. Their overtime is paid out of the ambulance. But it's really fire-related. A call firefighter, part-time firefighter, it comes back, you know, for a second or third ambulance call. They staff the ambulance. They're paid out of the fire call wages. When we buy medical supplies, we buy ninety percent of it for the ambulance. But we have medical supplies in um AEDs on the fire apparatus. So we're splitting bills. For, we have two purchase service accounts, we have two supply accounts, we have two separate wage accounts. And so I had a long conversation uh with Gary. Um, we brought in Becky and Donna, our town accountant, and looked at the whole thing. And because we're not doing any type of enterprise fund to uh offset the costs or we're not doing any type of receipts reserve or appropriation, we discussed the consolidation of the accounts into one. Um, it'd just be less line items. It'd be more clear and concise of what the true cost of operating the fire service. And like I said uh yesterday during the meeting, we're an all-hazard department. We do it, we do it all. You know, from fire, ambulance, you know, confined space, we do it all. So it, it, I think it, it's a better representation of what the cost is to operate the fire department. Right now, for the last several years, the fire department budget's been two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Well, that's not really a realistic number of what it costs to operate a fire department. And you know, the ambulance budget's been almost a million. And but the staffing wasn't she, wasn't shared. So we're just trying to consolidate. I, I did propose um consolidation of line items. Um, and I will le- leave it open, subject to Becky and Donna, to set the new line item numbers in titles. Uh, because it's gonna be some consolidation with the new accounting software that was coming online. So that gives them the opportunity to make some adjustments in uh consistencies across all departments uh as well. Um, so I'm just bringing that forward tonight uh to see if we can move forward, cause it'd be a great time now that we're moving to a new accounting software. This would be the time to make that change, so.
Great. Um, so what would, what we would need to do um, is wages need to be still separated. So any contracted director kind of a thing have to be. Um, but your supplies could all roll up into one and all of that. So just, so when you're looking at that as a board, um.
And I did have a conversation with the uh finance committee, uh, chairperson about this as well. Is what we would continue to support, our supporting documentation to the finance committee would be a clear, you know, you know, multi-level breakout of true de- definition of, of fixed costs for ambulance. You know, we can really define that uh very easily. And then it's just all lumped into one item. But it would be clear and very transparent of what the true costs are.
Do I have a motion to accept the new?
I make a motion to accept the combination of blah, 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 what did it say?
Proposed consolidation. It's right there.
I know, but I flipped the page.
I'm looking at this, not this. Wait a second.
Yep, I seconded it.
Just pending, I was just gonna say, pending final input with, I assume
Finance team.
Finance team in general that Austin Department headed.
It sounded like most of them were involved.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, but just.
Great, thank you very much.
Clark, I.
Nickel's eye.
Wait a minute.
And Benoid eye.
You thanked us before we actually noticed.
Thanks for putting it together, Seth.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
Um, select board goals and objectives. Does anybody have any updates on?
Just on like on the staffing, I know we had talked about performance reviews and I know especially in contracted personnel in the contract, it says that they will have a performance review and I don't think in past that they necessarily have had a review. So just as a, as a caution. Also, we've been um requesting exit conferences from all past um staff. And I know that Tamika and um Gary were accumulating that information. We never got any feedback. We weren't, we didn't want specific feedback, but trends, if there was any concerns that we saw any trends with staff um leaving for any particular reason, whether it be job security or whatever it was. So it would be nice just to see if there, to do an, an overall review to see if there were any trends involved. Um, and then of course, we had talked about setting up the funding for interns to uh help support in staffing.
Which is part of the twenty, the two and a half.
The override, yeah, yeah. That's all I, the comments I have.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. Um, we have no correspondence that I am aware of. Um, future meetings, so there is a meeting with an agenda item. Saturday, uh, so about thirty, um, at the Glenwood School. We'll have a, a, a board meeting. It'll be that agenda item and anything else that comes up.
May not approve it and you want the board.
Well, there you go. So. Just, anybody's listening, it's transfer of funds. It's not, it's not, we're not, not, not a big ask right now. And then May fifteenth, and then the next one would be May thirtieth. That would be the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
So just through the chair. So is it typical to wait, we are, after an election, before you guys meet? Or do you meet usually right after the election?
So I think generally in the past, it's kind of been at the will of consensus of whoever is elected on. Um, I think generally, I, I, I think we've done it both weeks.
Yeah, you, that's what I thought. It was usually, I thought it was the next day when you guys had a meeting. Especially if you have a lot of new, if you have new people on the board or change in board like that. That's just my comment, cause.
I know.
So I'm gonna bring up something that, talking with the, the, with Austin, he um served as a select board. And I am just really, I loved his, how he came on and when he came on as a select board. Um, there were circumstances that prescribed it, but they didn't, didn't sign or swear anybody in until July first for the new fiscal year. So there was a transition period. I know, it's not gonna happen this year. Because I'm pretty sure. But um, you know, it's, it, I, I, there's a lot of validity to, to that. There's, there's transitioning, there's finishing out the year's um fiscal projects that you might be working on.
It does make sense, especially depending on the outcome of, of the override and other issues that may come in elections. So yeah, that sounds good next year.
Gives time to, so I think, next year. I, I, I think it was a brilliant idea myself. So I just wanted to put that out there. So it's recorded in.
I, I don't know how the mechanics of elections work, whether that, that's allowed, right?
Um, so there was actually somebody that had inquired about this. And um, so I reached out to Anita and Peter today, and it is not something that is um prescribed in our bylaws.
Right.
So I, it's possible that it could just be a policy change. Um, because obviously that's the case with all elected boards, that they start as soon as the election is over, but.
Because, you know, this, when I came on the board, it was Because, you know, this, when I came on the board, it was the the town, oh, it was election. And then like Saturday later, I'm sitting there at at the annual town meeting going, don't look at me, I don't know what I'm doing.
No, 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 we had the town meeting before the elections.
Two years ago.
It was COVID year, I think we.
It was COVID year.
Did we do it before?
Yes, cause I remember I was brand new.
That's right, that was the messy, messy, messy.
And and so, so it.
Heck, keep you.
Yeah.
We keep going back and forth.
It was a messy, messy, messy year, yes.
So we keep going back and forth with this. So it it just, it'd be nice, cause you wouldn't have to worry about when those happened and what order it happened. And like I said, give give people time to acclimate, but.
So you could put that on the agenda the day after the election.
If I may, if I.
Just an idea.
I just had a thought pop in my head, I, that maybe Austin, I don't know how it worked in, when you were on, but for consideration, oftentimes the boards are, the board is doing appointments for July first. And even for us coming on as new members, it's a lot to get on. But is there also value to having having the the newly elected officials have a voice for that upcoming year? Again, I don't know, we don't need to talk about it right now.
There could be the argument that they may not be familiar with a lot of the boards either, if they're brand new, so. There's, you know, it's both sides to it.
So may I ask the members of the board that don't have plans after me, would you like a meeting scheduled for May ninth or May tenth for the board to reorganize?
I don't know, I I can't tell you. Yes, I can say yes.
Oh, so me? All right, just pause down here, I'm sorry. Well, let me know.
It's like a big decision.
Um.
You can always cancel it.
Yeah, I was gonna say maybe post it.
Okay.
And then we can.
Do you want it posted for um Tuesday, the ninth at six? Yes, okay.
So if anybody's withdrawing there. Because they.
When is the election?
Monday, the eighth.
Eighth, yeah.
A week from today, so that would be the next day.
So the next day.
Twenty to the sixth, yeah.
No, Tuesday.
Ninth.
Ninth, ninth.
Ninth, yeah, six, nine, that's upside down, whatever.
I knew what you meant.
This was, this was Tamika, she knows what she's talking about.
And Skip is not running for the finance committee.
You don't have to run for that.
Run from it. All right.
All right, um, so Tamika just ordered, we're gonna adjourn, and then we can, we we don't have to, we don't have to come back.
The motion needs to say that you're gonna adjourn to executive session for reason number three, and then you're going to adjourn from executive session.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Black eye.
Nichols eye.
Wait a minute. And Benoid eye.